All right, good evening, everybody. We're gonna call this meeting to order. And just so everybody knows, I've been asked to go fast, so we're gonna try. Come on, Teddy. All right, so we're gonna call it an order, our 13 October meeting. It's now six, still, well, still six o'clock. And I don't think I see our pastor here tonight. So Billy, I'm gonna call an audible. Would you please, sir, come up and do our invocation? Mr. Goodson?
I was told you'd be all right with that.
That was great. Thanks, John. Father, we thank you for this evening, for this time that we can gather together, Lord, and conduct business for this city, or for our residents, most importantly. Pray that you would bless the work of this council, bless the work of this city. Bless all the residents of this city, Lord, and may everything that we do glorify you in each and every action that we take and word that we say. For the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
All right, if you'll follow me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. All right, can I get the roll call, please?
Mayor Finley, Councilmember Roblesky.
Here.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlet.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Here.
Councilmember Seaford.
I am here. We have a quorum, so we'll move into amendments to the agenda. And I believe we do have a few or a couple tonight, so Megan?
Yes, I have one amendment to the agenda. This is the addition of an item under the Recreation Department line item, which will add last to the agenda. It'll be Item A. This is Resolution 2025-341R to authorize a grant application and purchase of playground equipment for neighborhood parks from Struthers Recreation and Game Time. This involves an expenditure of approximately $170,643 from the Recreation Department budget and acceptance of matching funds in approximately the same amount.
All right, and just make sure I'm tracking, you're gonna add that right after Police. The only item for Parks and Rec.
Yes.
All right, cool. Okay, with that, we're gonna move into approval of the minutes. And first up, we have our regular session from 22 September.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seaford.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
All right, that motion passes. And next, we have up 30 September special meeting. Yeah, 30 September special meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Abstain.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
All right, and next up, we have Presentation of Awards. And Mayor Finley is not here tonight, so you're gonna be stuck with me, so I'll come down the podium. All right, so we have our proclamation this evening, designating today as Redstone Toastmasters Day. And it says, "Whereas Toastmasters International is a nonprofit educational organization consisting of thousands of clubs in 148 countries throughout the world for the purpose of helping members improve their communication, public speaking, and leadership skills." And a bunch of whereases. And then, "Whereas Redstone Toastmasters continues to distinguish itself year after year and provide services to other organizations when requested." So I'm gonna request your services as Toastmasters. All three of y'all come on up. Just proclamation. And, oh, you want a picture? Hold on. And this is Yelena, and so in true Toastmasters, I guess, fashion, she's gonna give a speech.
Short speech. Good evening, city council members and guests. On behalf of Redstone Toastmasters, it is my honor to accept this proclamation that is there since October 21st, as the Redstone Toastmasters day in the city of Madison. Redstone Toastmasters International is our current organization. It has been around for more than 100 years. It is a global nonprofit that teaches people how to speak confidently and lead with purpose. For 70 years, our club has been empowering men and women in North Alabama to find their voice, build their leadership skills, and common to speak, whether it's in the boardroom, in the classroom, or here in the community hall. We thank the city of Madison for celebrating this milestone with us. We also thank many Toastmasters, past and present, who have kept our club thriving for seven decades. And as we celebrate this anniversary with songs, for 15 years being a president distinguished club, we look forward to welcoming new voices, empowering new leaders, and serving our Madison community for years to come. Thank you. Thank you, John.
All right, we have no other Presentation of Awards tonight, so we'll go into public comments. And just a reminder to the public, you have three minutes. And when you do, please approach the podium, please give your name and address or district, whichever you're comfortable with for the record. And keep your comments to three minutes or less. So we do have someone that signed up ahead of time. We have a Mr. Richard Travers. You, sir, are number one.
I'm Richard Travers. I live at 301 Freedom Court. Through my backyard, I can see where the Gooch Lane and Balch Road Roundabout's gonna go. I realize construction's gonna start in May, and so I just had some questions. I can admit that I hadn't been paying much attention to what was going on with this kind of stuff until I found out recently what was going on, so I thought I would ask a few questions and ask, first and foremost, was there ever a consideration for the driveway that is just a few feet from the entranceway into the church that's right across the street where Gooch Lane ends at Balch? There's a driveway like five to 10 feet from there, and I don't know how the construction's gonna affect that, so I wanted to know that. And then, secondly, was there ever consideration for a signal there? And what makes the roundabout better than a signal there? So that's really all I wanted to say.
Okay, Richard, yes, there was consideration for the driveway. In fact, our engineering department worked with the homeowner to get that designed so that it was amenable. I don't know the answer to the second question. I know that a signal was considered. I don't know why a roundabout was chosen. We can ask, Michael, do you wanna answer that?
Well, why don't we, why don't we wait until engineering is, and department reports, and we can ask Michael to answer that during that time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Okay, that's all we have that has signed up ahead of time. So I ask, is there anyone else in the public that would desire to speak to council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comments and move to Consent Agenda and Finance Committee Report.
Yes, the Finance Committee has reviewed the regular and periodic bills. Also, in the consent agenda, we have a renewal of supplemental insurance for $31,598.60. An alternative, risk and alternative data solutions agreement for $225 a month for the police department. We have an acceptance of an insurance settlement from an accident on June the 15th in the amount of $1,392.81, minus the $1,000 deductible. We have a resolution declaring the personal property formerly used by the mayor and city council members of the 2020 to 2025 administration surplus and authorizing its disposal. We have a resolution accepting another insurance settlement for an incident on August the 1st with the $4,764.92 less the $1,000 deductible. And we are authorizing the third and final payment to GPR South Madison LLC for Resolution 2024-162R and the acceptance of a $44.22 donation from Property Room to be deposited in the Madison Police Department donation account. And with that, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Seaford.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
All right, that motion passes. And we're gonna move into Presentation of Reports. I'm gonna call audible real quick because we were, just wanna address one thing. I know there may be some folks here in the public that wanna discuss it. We were going to have a second reading of the Ballcore Agreement on the agenda for this evening. That has been pulled. We're not ready to bring that forward yet. Councilmember Bartlet is working on some details, I think, with legal and Ballcore in that agreement, as well as some other economic development initiatives as part of that. And so we're just not ready at this time to bring that forward, so. So there will not be a public hearing on that this evening, so that's why you don't see that on here. Okay, with that, we'll go to District One.
Yes, sir. Well, I'd like to begin by thanking Councilmember Powell. Understand this is his last meeting today. I wanna thank him for nine years of service. That's 63 dog years, and it's, you know, we haven't always seen eye to eye, but have great respect for you and have really gotten to know you and Ricky better and just very thankful for the relationship that we have and the friendship that we have and your support, and you have my utmost respect, and good luck on the next chapter of your life. I look forward to seeing what that is all about. So I'm wearing a Madison Police Department shirt today, and they are available right here at the window next door. They're available in pink, $20, and the support for this shirt goes to Clearview Cancer Institute. So all the proceeds will go to them. And then also want to especially recognize this shirt as well. I mean, both shirts are great. What you need to do is you need to get both shirts. This is from our Madison Fire and Rescue Department, and the proceeds from this shirt, it's $25 for a long sleeve. I feel like such a salesperson here, $20 for a short sleeve. But the money for this goes to Madison Hospital Breast Cancer Assistance Fund. And what is especially unique about this is, and trying not to get emotional here, but our fire chief, this is her helmet, and she is such an inspiration to us and the battle she is fighting, and through the Lord's help and provision and her physicians and Clearview Cancer Institute, is winning. And so the proceeds for this go to Clearview Cancer Institute. Would love for everyone to get one of these to wear in honor of our fire chief, Brandy Williams, who we love and admire. And I'm gonna stop now, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am. District Two.
Okay, Thursday afternoon, you've probably seen the signs, Bob Jones is gonna have a parade right down the street, so make your travel plans accordingly or stop and get candy, which is always cool. Also, our Civic Awareness Academy has begun, and we will have a class Thursday after the parade. And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. District Three.
So this may very well be my last meeting. Things, things are changing for me daily, but, you know, if it is, I'd go ahead, I'd like to go ahead and mention the things that I'm grateful for. First of all, I am very grateful for the citizens that have allowed me the last nine years to serve them. And I hope that I've done that in a manner that they can appreciate and, you know, agree or disagree, I can promise you I always did it with the best of Madison in mind. Secondly, our city employees are just absolutely hands down some of the best people I've worked with throughout my careers and several different things. So I am forever grateful to you guys, and those of you who are in here, please pass along to your, to your other, other folks that work with you. And the two councils I have, that got to work with, you know, I see Gerald out here and, of course, Tommy Overcash and Steve Smith on our last council. I'm grateful to have got to work with them and learn, and, you know, coming in, it was really interesting because I had all these things that I really wanted to get done really quickly that I'd promised on the campaign trail that I gathered very quickly that I'd made some promises that maybe didn't make sense. So, but what you find out is, at the end of the day, you do the best you can, what you have, and you do what's best for the city. For instance, you know, my whole goal when I got on council was to get my street paved, Church Street. Nine years later, it hasn't been touched, okay? But the reason is because there are so many other projects that are so much more important than those projects. Some of the things we learned is, you know, council is, you know, where do we put sidewalks? Everybody wants sidewalks, and Gerald, of course, had one of the greatest comments ever. He goes, "Well, if you'll look around the city, you'll see where people are walking." You know, if there's not a sidewalk there, they'll make a path, so that's where you put sidewalks. Just a lot of things like that, the ballpark, you know, and all the things it has brought. It was never meant to be a product that produced, you know, lots of money and that kind of thing. It was made to be a product as bringing people in and bringing businesses there and growing that area. And it's done that. It's done that well. But one of the most important things that, you know, I'm grateful that I was a part of is we got to put a baby box in the fire department. And we were one of the first cities to do that, and now they're throughout the state. And I know for sure we've saved three babies right here in this city. And the other ones, you know, are just precious. What's gonna become of those children, I have no idea, but I was glad to be part of that. Glad, you know, to be part of this council and, you know, just, I wish Madison the best and everything that comes at us, and, you know, I'll still be around, maybe, depending on if my wife sells our house or doesn't sell our house, or we move or don't move, I don't know. But I will be around, and if anybody needs me, my phone number's still available, and it's public, so give me a call. That's all I've got.
Thanks, sir. Okay, District Four is out tonight, so we'll move to District Five.
Okay, at 5:00 PM tonight, we had an HR committee meeting. We're going to be bringing some things to the council at the October 27th meeting from there. I just wanna thank Callie so much for the work that you do and the attention to detail that you bring to this position. I really appreciate your leadership on HR. On October 15th, this Wednesday, we will conduct Board of Education interviews for the replacement for Alice Lesman. The interviews will begin at 5:30 in council chambers. We will not have a decision after that interview. We will then adjourn, and we anticipate having a decision at the October 27th council meeting. And finally, I'd like to thank Teddy Powell for his service on the city council the last nine years. You know, when I was on the school board, and particularly when I was school board president, Councilmember Powell and I had some very interesting exchanges from the podium. And I will tell you that I was so surprised when I got on council and I found out after doing a personality indicator, he and I had the identical personality and that we were both analytical. I think green was our color, and we wanted to see numbers, and that's how we make our decisions, and I was very surprised. And I also have enjoyed working with Councilmember Powell, and so thank you, Teddy, for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. And District Six.
All right, I'll start off with my favorite topic, Madison Street Festival. It was a great success. It was so much fun. It was an absolutely beautiful day. The crowd was just wonderful, and everyone was spending money, and it, it was just great. The people were so happy, and they kept walking around and just noticing that they're second happiest group. The very first was right after we came back after COVID. Remember, because we had to stop for two years, and we came back, and it was a huge crowd. And everybody was just so happy to be out and about. This one, this last, was great, too. Everybody was happy. Everybody was just in a good mood, happy to be out. So I just wanna thank the community for coming out, supporting the Madison Street Festival. I want to just express my great appreciation to everybody that worked on the committee. It's, it's over 25 people that are on the committee, so I'm not gonna go through all the names, but it's a big crowd, and they work all year long, and they did a phenomenal job of preparing for this year's festival, so I wanna make sure that they feel appreciated. Also, I wanna thank Public Works. They do so much for us to support this. They start working early in the week to get everything done. I also wanna thank the police department. They provided wonderful security. After everything that you hear in the news, you know, you wonder what could happen in our crowd. Nothing happened in our crowd. Everybody was great, and I really appreciate the service put in by our police department. So thank you for that, and just, it was a great festival, so thank you. I also like Mara, her long shirts, okay, because it is a great, what they're doing is awesome. The fire has it in pink, so if anybody wants pink, it's not only blue. And then the police have theirs, and the buck is like that. So if you have a chance, please do, do support the breast initiative on this. Also, Teddy, thank you for all that you've done. I really mean that. It's been a very interesting five years for all of us. We've got to know each other. We've been through good times, and we haven't always agreed, but that doesn't mean we didn't, it was still good to serve with you, Teddy. So best of luck wherever you end up, you know, wherever I end up, we never know these things. But I got one more, I got one more yet, so I'll hold off for that, but anyway. I do believe that's it. Thank you.
All right, and District Seven, I guess the only thing I've got is, Teddy? It's been a joy serving with you for the last nine years. I think Mara, actually, it is nine times seven, so that is 63. We were a lot younger before we started this. You still have brown hair. I've got gray, so. But no, I've enjoyed serving with you, learned a lot from you, and I appreciate it. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you.
And we'll see what happens in a couple weeks. So, all right, we're gonna go out of Presentation of Reports and move into Board and Committee Appointments. And we have one up for tonight, and I can't remember who this is. I mean, I know who Gerald Clark is.
They don't actually have a liaison.
All right, well, since Teddy just left, Gerald, I'll do the, I'll do the honors for you, okay? All right, we're gonna reappoint Gerald Clark to place seven of the Madison Station Historic Preservation Commission with a term expiring on 27 October 2028. Are there any other nominations? All right, seeing none, we'll appoint Gerald to that position on that commission. I might wanna try and say that twice for that term. So thank you, Gerald, for being willing to serve and continue to serve. Okay, so no more after that. We've got no public hearings this evening. And with that, we're gonna move into Engineering. And with that, we're going to move into engineering under department reports. Hey, Michael, when you, before you start, do you mind addressing gentleman's concern about traffic light versus roundabout at Boch and Gooch?
Sure, so as councilperson Spears mentioned, we did engage with the property owner there at the corner and worked with him and found a design that accommodated his driveway to the best that we could. So that is part of the scope of the project is to do, you know, those accommodations. Sorry, Chris. As far as why we're going with the roundabout versus any other solution, part of the reason that we're even looking at that intersection was because of accidents over there. There were a lot of accidents in that area. Most of those, when we did the analysis of that, where we were in collisions, that comes from traffic stopping. A lot of it's southbound, some of it northbound, making turns, allowing people to make turns. So that kind of led us to roundabout because of that, keeps the traffic moving. If we'd have gone with a traffic signal, we probably would have had to build turn lanes to accommodate traffic signal, too. At that point, we're almost at a wash on construction costs between a traffic signal with all the lanes versus a roundabout. And then it's just, from a maintenance standpoint, you know, roundabouts a lot less maintenance. So you build it, and then that's it. We don't have to worry about poles and stuff getting hit and insurance, all that stuff.
Is the start date still approximately May?
That's what's in the contract, yes.
Okay.
So assuming all of the utility relocations get done in time, all the property gets acquired, and any of the, all the materials get procured as scheduled, then that's, that's.
Thank you.
The things that are outside of my control, yes.
Okay, thanks, sir.
All right, so the first item I have is resolution number 2025-305-R, authorizing professional services agreement with Halliburton Surveying and Mapping Incorporated for surveying services along the west side of Seeger's Road at Moore's Creek Phase One subdivision. $10,000 to be paid from the engineering department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next I have resolution number 2025-313-R, authorizing a public professional services agreement with Evaldi Engineering for traffic signal design services for project 26003, Town Madison Boulevard and Out 565 Intersection Improvements. $79,457.50 to be paid from engineering department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? As we talked about at the agenda review, this is just cleanup of the existing intersection, making it more like what it should be.
That's right, so we'll be upgrading a lot of the equipment, too, and doing some improvements to the lanes and adding up some pedestrian functionality, too.
Okay, all right. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes.
All right, next is resolution number 2025-313-R, authorizing amendment number one with Kimberly Hornet Associates for additional surveying and design services to include Oak Street related to project 25006 Sullivan and Mill Intersection Improvement. $74,500 to be paid from engineering department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, can I get the vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes.
All right, resolution number 2025-324-R, authorizing professional services agreement with ECS Southeast LLC for geotechnical work on Seeger's Road and Missoula Drive. $10,000 to be paid from Fund 38.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Man, y'all better get some practice, I ain't going to be here next week.
All right, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes.
And finally, I have resolution number 2025-325-R, authorizing amendment number one with Corey Engineering for additional geotechnical services on project 25005 Sullivan and Brown's Ferry Intersection Improvements. $3,295 to be paid from engineering department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
It was Teddy.
It was Teddy.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And next up, we have facilities and grounds.
Facilities and grounds department has two resolutions for your consideration tonight. First one is resolution 2025-314-R, authorizing an agreement with American Overhead Door for preventative maintenance services, amount of $15,877 to be paid for from our facilities and ground department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
That motion passes.
Resolution 2025-33322-R, authorizing professional services agreement with JM Phillips Engineering LLC to provide civil engineering design services for topal survey and proposed retaining wall along the Toyota Field parking lot, boundaries corrected, solar erosion, amount of $19,500 to be paid from the multi-use drainage.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, motion passes. Thanks, sir. And next up, fire and rescue.
Good evening. I have two items. Resolution number 2025-319-R, authorizing a subscription agreement with Locality Media Incorporated for a one-year subscription to First Do Software in the amount of $34,497.23 to be paid from the fire department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, that motion passes.
Next one is resolution number 2025-320-R, authorizing an amended professional services agreement with Vickers Consulting Services Incorporated for preparation of an updated assistance to firefighters grant application, which is $250 to be paid from the fire department budget. I don't think we were awarded the radio grant that we applied for, doesn't appear that way. So this would just be another reapplication, which is a much lower fee. Just, I don't know when it's going to open, we're just preparing for it because it never lines up with the council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Somebody second, I don't know. Karen did, okay.
Ronnie and then me.
All right. We got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Thanks for being ahead of the game. Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And now we have legal.
Good evening, I have three items for your consideration this evening. The first one is ordinance number 2025-302. This is a second reading for an ordinance to authorize a franchise agreement with Unity Fiber Gulf Co. LLC. This is a new subsidiary of Unity Fiber. The city already has a subsidiary of Unity Fiber operating in the city and paying franchise fees. That's Southern Light. And this company will utilize the same network, and it's been formed so that Unity can expand its fiber infrastructure throughout the southeast. So if approved, this agreement will have a ten-year term. The company will pay a 5% franchise fee, the same as the other company. And it will also include the guarantee of free fiber connections to certain city facilities, including Dublin Park, Palmer Park, and Madison Community Center. And Unity's counsel, John Cersei, is here in case you have any questions with him. But I'd like to ask for your approval tonight.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
That motion passes.
The next item is a first reading for ordinance 2025-315. This ordinance authorizes Madison Utilities to grant an easement to the North Alabama Gas District. And this is a result of an ASBULT survey built after the completion of the Huntsville-Brown's Ferry Road Roundabout. So this is to clarify the locations of where these other utilities have infrastructure within the Madison Utilities property there. So the board has approved the grant of this easement 1/100 of an acre to the North Alabama Gas District. It's just a first reading for that one. And then the same, the next ordinance is 2025-316, and this is basically a twin to the other one with the grant of 1/100 of an easement to the Limestone County Water and Sewer Authority to clarify where all the utility infrastructure is near that project.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. And next up, we have planning.
The first item this evening is proposed ordinance number 2025-267. This is a first reading to establish an entertainment district in the downtown. You can see the map there. It comprises primarily the commercial area of downtown. It includes the commercial properties on Church Street just across the tracks and goes all the way down to the avenue. Similar to Town Madison, the approved cup is going to be a 16-ounce max Kelly green color cup. That's the cup that gets used in Town Madison, and it's just what the city adopted. That is just showing a solo cup. But like in Town Madison, when they launched it, there was a Town Madison cup. So, you know, if the business owners want to get together and have a sponsor of a cup, that kind of thing, that they can certainly do that. It just has to be Kelly green in color and not exceed 65, or 60 ounces. 65, my gracious.
65 ounces, oh my gosh.
Hold on, you're on the record for 65.
Need to, well, anyway. As part of the entertainment district, we will put stencil markings on key locations so that people know when they're in the district and out of the district. The stencil there is shown, and the stars indicate the areas where we're looking at putting those stencils down, and those will go into effect before, or once the ordinance goes into effect. And we have the same stencil in sidewalks in Town Madison as well. All of the information has been sent out to the business owners multiple times to let them know how the district functions. And we will be back at your next meeting asking for approval.
Hey, Mayor Beth, can I ask, is there a way to send this same information out to the homeowners that are in there as well?
Yes, originally, you may recall, we were contemplating in trying to include the Insanity Complex property. And in order to be able to link that, the proposed boundary had included Maple Street properties. And when we were doing that, we notified everybody on Church Street. We notified everybody on Maple Street. Because of Insanity Complex closing, we also received some feedbacks from at least one resident on Maple Street that wasn't too keen on that idea. We've pulled back the boundary. And when we pulled back the boundary, we sent out correspondence in August, I think it was of this year, letting folks know that the boundary had changed. We did not notify the folks up on Church Street about that boundary change, but we did notify the folks on Maple Street. We can certainly send out another correspondence if you'd like.
I think that'd be a good idea. I mean, I would like to note that it did go up to 302 Church. That's taken out, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the rub.
But it doesn't include Maple Street, so.
It does not.
Yeah.
It only includes those commercial properties up to Church Street. There are some residential properties on Kane Street that are included only because we were trying to capture the vacant property at the southwest corner of Lanier and Celtic, which is opposite the lumberyard. That's a vacant commercial property.
To date, have you heard from any of those homeowners in that area?
We had, we've had a couple of questions come, just wanting to understand how the district functions. We haven't had anybody of voice opposition to it in that area.
Okay, thank you.
They all own green caps, by the way. Not just green, it's got to be Kelly green. I was informed of that because I kind of like John Deere green.
I appreciate that.
She's a color, by the way.
Okay.
All right, you're good.
All right. Your next item is proposed ordinance number 2025-289, and this is for vacation of utility and drainage easement. This is technically the Tolloke subdivision, but this is located at the southeast corner of Gillespie and County, Brownsbury Road, excuse me, where the LDS church is proposed. And you can see the yellow line there that indicates the easement that would be vacated. There used to be a property line there. They've, they're consolidating the lots and requesting to remove the easement. We're recommending approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is proposed ordinance number 2025-290. This is for vacation of utility and drainage easement. This is within what's called the Arlington Park subdivision. This is an industrial property located at the southeast corner of West Chester and Royal Drive. We have a current business in the city of Madison that's looking to expand and build a building on this property. So they're consolidating the lots, and the easement that runs between the two lots currently needs to be vacated. We're recommending approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Next, we have proposed ordinance number 2025-291. Next, we have proposed ordinance number 2025-291. This is for vacation of a drainage easement located in lots 122, 23, and 124 of Bellow Woods. They're Phase Four. These properties were in the floodplain. The developer has done fill to locate them out of the floodplain, and therefore we can have the easement removed, so we are recommending approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes.
Your next item is Resolution Number 2025-308-R. This is a request to set a public hearing to change the zoning of 1.2 acres to eight acres located at the northwest corner of Eastview and Hughes Road. The request is from the property owner to change the zoning from R1A, which is a low-density zoning, to B2, which is a commercial zoning. This item did go to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission and staff are recommending approval, and this resolution would set the public hearing for November 24th.
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Motion by Councilmember Powell, second by Councilmember Spears.
Is that where the church is?
There used to be a trailer there.
It's right diagonally across from it.
It used to be a mobile home on the property, but it's currently vacant. But it is just south of St. Matthew's Episcopal Church and northwest of Valley Presbyterian.
Right. Do we know what they want to put in there?
They do not have anybody that they've identified to us. That question came at the Planning Commission as well. They're just looking to sell it. I think they've had it on the market as residential, and it didn't go, so they're looking to rezone it. And this is the comp plan, the comprehensive plan calls for it to be commercial ultimately as well, so I don't believe a buyer has been identified.
Okay.
I'm thinking Krispy Kreme.
I don't know, it just looks like a bad place.
Across from the school, just saying.
I think it's a little small.
No, I don't have space there.
There's a little grade differential, so any, anything that goes there is gonna be a small development.
Yeah.
Right. But I'm just concerned about the way the traffic flow is right there, already so congested. So how would a driveway going in and out?
Well, if I might, those are all part of things that would come as part of their plat development, that would go before Planning Commission, that has to go through the whole committees and be checked, and make sure that they meet regulations. So that's a long ways down the path, and we don't have anything just there yet. I will say, from the Planning Commission, there was one or two people that maybe.
One.
One person that spoke in opposition to it with a, their opposition was increase in traffic in the area, in which, I don't know, 3:30 and 8:30 in the morning, traffic is pretty horrendous there already, so I'm pretty sure.
There's a lot of times during, I live right down from there, there's a lot of times that traffic's just really tricky, so it'd just be the ingress, egress.
Yep, which they have.
It'd be very tricky.
Right.
There's an existing driveway because there was a home there. So we haven't, as Mr. Seifert just said, you know, we have not studied it, we don't have a site plan, and so everything is subject to complying with city requirements.
Right. It's just my concern of turning it into commercial when it could be just a tricky place for commercial development.
Okay. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
I mean, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. And, okay.
Last item is proposed ordinance number 2025-312. This is just a first reading, and this is a request to vacate a utility and drainage easement located at 241 Concord Drive. You can see the easement area there, which is located in their side yard effectively to, they've had some erosion issues, and so they're looking to put in retaining wall and stabilize that.
Move to approve.
This is just a first reading, but thank you for your support.
I'm gonna try to approve it anyway.
All right.
This is my last meeting, I gotta do everything I can.
Yes, sir. All right.
You're gonna be back next.
All right, thank you, ma'am.